The first order of business, of course, is our invocation. And after the invocation, the pledge of allegiance, to ask everybody to stand after the invocation. Stand. And Reverend David Lambert, pastor of the Exceed Life Church here this evening to give us the invocation. Welcome, sir.
It's an honor to be here to officiate this prayer. Let us bow our heads. Heavenly Father, we thank you for your justice and mercy. We thank you for your gift of life and the opportunity to serve the people of the city of Virginia Beach. Help us to act with character and conviction. Help us to listen with understanding and goodwill. Help us to speak with clarity and restraint. Give us a spirit of service. Remind us that we're stewards of your authority. Give us leaders that you desire. And Father, I thank you for blessing the city of Virginia Beach, and I thank you for blessing this council, and I thank you, Father God, for a spirit of unity and one accord, and I thank you for blessing the city of Virginia Beach abundantly and mightily. In Jesus' name, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much, Reverend. Madam Clerk, you have the roll call.
Yes, Your Honor.
Thank you. May I have a motion for the certification of the closed session?
So moved.
Vote so.
By a vote of ten to zero, with the mayor being absent, you have certified the closed session to be in accordance with the motion recessed.
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, I just have a query for the city attorney. I voted aye for the part that I attended. Does the record need to reflect that I excuse myself from part of the executive session?
Well, you can certainly do that. It's not required, but I can make that point clear.
I don't know that I'm only voting aye for the part that I was able to attend.
Thank you, Mr. Moss. May I have a motion for the approval of the informal and formal session minutes of January 16, 2018?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion on that? If not, the vote's open.
By a vote of ten to zero, you have approved the minutes estimated.
I'm going to go directly first to the mayor's presentation, which is a proclamation of the African-American heritage month. And I believe Dr. Amelia Ross Hammond is here, founder of the executive and executive director of project management in African-American Cultural Center. Please step forward, Amelia.
I'm our council member.
Thank you. I would like also some of the African-American Cultural Center E-Board to join me.
Yes, please.
What's happening there? How's it going?
Welcome, folks. I've read this proclamation on behalf of the mayor. Whereas people of African descent have contributed to the community in Virginia Beach for nearly 400 years, and whereas the general commemoration of the historical contributions of African-Americans in Virginia and elsewhere was first established as Negro History Week in 1926 by a native Virginian, Carter G. Woodson, and whereas President Gerald R. Ford expanded this commemoration and celebration to encompass Black History Month in 1976, and whereas since 1996, the President of the United States has issued an annual proclamation for National African-American History Month, and whereas the theme of the commemoration in 2018 is African-Americans in times of war, and whereas African-Americans for Virginia Beach have served honorably and bravely in times of war, including Miles James, who was born a slave in Princeess Anne County, and was awarded the Medal of Honor for his actions on the battlefield in the Battle of New Market Heights in 1864, and whereas beginning in 1619, many African-Americans were brought to Virginia against their will and were enslaved for their labor until 1865, and whereas the Sea-Tac area in Virginia Beach is one of the oldest free African-American communities in the United States, and whereas Willis Augustus Hodges was the first African-American elected to office representing Princeess Anne County in the State Constitutional Convention of 1867-68, and whereas African-Americans have overcome enslavement, discrimination, and adversity to make positive contributions in education, business, government, military, entertainment, athletics, and all forms of enterprise, service, and achievement in Virginia Beach, the Commonwealth of Virginia, and the United States of America, and whereas the mayor and city council supports the establishment of an African-American Cultural Center in Virginia Beach as a hub for African-American culture and history. Now therefore, I, William D. Sessions Jr., mayor of the city of Virginia Beach, hereby proclaim February 2018 African-American Heritage Month in Virginia Beach, and further call upon the citizens, government agencies, public and private institutions, businesses, and schools in Virginia Beach to recognize the contributions of African-Americans to the history and development of the city, state, and nation, and to commemorate this month with appropriate activities. And witness whereof I have hereunto set my hand and cause the official seal of the city of Virginia Beach to be affixed this sixth day of February 2018, and it's signed by Mayor Sessions.
Thank you. Thank you so much, Vice Mayor. I would like to say thank you to the Virginia Beach Historic Preservation Commission for moving this forward and asking one person who I know well, Councilwoman Rosemary Wilson, to move that forward. She didn't know I've heard. So I thank you all. We are most appreciative.
We thank you, and just one comment I'd like to make, and looking at this group, and I know most of you, you folks emanate what this resolution is all about. Thank you so much for being here. All right, now if I may, members of council, I will read the consent agenda, and after I read the consent agenda, if somebody will give me a motion and a second.
Mr. Jones, I'm sorry, sir, but we do have some speakers signed up on some items that were originally scheduled for consent.
All right. Are they in favor?
So I'm not 100% sure, I'm sorry to say.
Okay. All right. The first one that you mentioned to me was item four. Is that correct?
Offshore drilling.
Under ordinances?
Sorry. Yes, number four.
All right. And then also nine A, I believe.
Nine A and B, please.
And B?
Yeah.
All right. I've made note of that, and we'll vote on those separately.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Under the consent presented for approval, ordinances and resolutions, item one, which is an ordinance to amend section 2-121 and 2-123 of the City Code for a Deferred Compensation Plan; two, resolution to adopt the Commonwealth of Virginia 457 Deferred Compensation Plan; three, resolution to adopt the Virginia Cash Match Plan as the successor to the Sheriff's Supplemental Retirement Plan; item six, which is ordinance to declare property located at 2305 Indian Hill Road in a permanent utility easement encumbering the adjacent lot to be in excess of the city needs, and authorize city manager to convey the property to Sylvia Thomas Clark and to vacate the easement; item seven, ordinance to authorize temporary encroachments into a portion of the existing city right of way known as Viking Drive located at the front of 536 Viking Drive in the Beach District; item eight, which is ordinance to accept and appropriate from the Virginia Department of Emergency Management to the Office of Emergency Management fiscal year 2017-18, operating budget, A, $3,500, Ray City's Radiological Preparedness Program; B, $15,000, Ray Medically Friendly Shelter Exercise; and C, $19,000, Ray Community Emergency Response Team. Declare a public hearing on planning, and the items for planning for consent are: item one, Consumer Properties LLC for a variance to section 4.4B of the subdivision regulations, lot area and width, 2311 Busky Lane in the Beach District; item two, is the application of Michael Benetti and Jeffrey Murphy for a variance to section 4.4B and D of the subdivision regulations, Ray direct access to Public Street Lotwidth, west side of Reddick Lane in the Princess Anne District; item three is the application of HHVB2 LLC for modification of conditions, Ray alternations to existing single-family home into apartment building at 433rd Street; item five was the application of Larry Garrison and Hilltop Investors LLC for conditional use permit, Ray motor vehicle sales at 1805 Virginia Beach Boulevard Suite 102 in the Beach District; item six, application Luciana Crespo and the Bruce W. and L. and B. Gallup Joint Revocable Inner Five O's Trust Agreement dated December 21, 2015 for conditional use permit, Ray Tattoo Parlor at 325 First Colonial Road; and item seven, the application of Lynn Haven Mall LLC for a major entertainment venue signage permit at 701, 739, 745, 757, and 773 in the Lynn Haven Parkway, 101, 1,005, and 1,009 Lynn Haven Mall Loop in the Rose Hall District. May I have a motion?
So moved. Second.
Motion's made in second. Any discussion? If not, the vote's open.
By a vote of ten to zero, you have approved the consent agenda as read by the Vice
First item, well, before we go to the items, let me state that the all speakers will have three minutes to speak unless they're representing a local civic league. In that event, they have 10 minutes.
That's for planning items only, Mr. Vice Mayor?
That applies only to planning items. All other speakers are three minutes. The first item is under ordinance and resolutions, which is item four, is a resolution to reiterate opposition to offshore and gas exploration seeking the same exemption provided to the state of Florida. Speakers?
Yes, sir. Wallace Godwin.
Welcome, sir.
My name is Wallace Godwin. I live here in the 1955. I think we should have offshore drilling because it will give more reach to crab guys. And fishing will get better because of the race. Thank you.
Gloria Haleslip, or Hayslip, I'm sorry. And then Barbara Messner? Barbara Messner?
Okay, on the offshore drilling, you've already had a resolution. I can't understand why you would do it again tonight when you have a packed room, there aren't enough seats for everyone, and to put all these things on the same agenda is outrageous. If y'all are concerned about the quality of the beaches and the waterways, you wouldn't be turning our oceanfront into a commercial venue every weekend, every fundraiser. I mean, this past weekend, the polar plunge, I've never seen so many vehicles in my life on the boardwalk. I might offend a few people, but the dogs on the beach, you know, that's pollution. We've closed the beaches, I don't know how many times, 20 years ago, the beaches were never closed because of pollution. Y'all have hundreds of porta-potties on the beach for special events. I mean, if you really care about the quality of the water and the sea life, then you would take better care of the beach instead of worrying about offshore drilling. Thank you.
That's all the speakers.
May I have a motion on item four, which is resolution to reiterate opposition to offshore gas exploration, seeking the same exemption provided to the state of Florida?
Mr. Vice Mayor, I'd like to make that motion, and I'd like to point out that really the reason that we're reiterating it tonight is that, you know, the opportunity for offshore leasing has been opened up again after it was recently closed. But I will state that, you know, one of the things that concerns me about our current situation that was different than when we had took this position over the summer was that with the President actually holding Florida exempt from offshore exploration could potentially put us at a disadvantage in terms of making the argument to keep our current military assets. In other words, if Florida can make the argument that they can take an aircraft carrier and perform all the exercises off the coast without any interference with offshore oil rigs but would not have that exact same position off the coast of Virginia, it certainly puts us more at a disadvantage in terms of being able to just maintain the current assets that we have. And so for the reasons that we've already stated in the past and that additional condition that we have now, I'd like to make the motion that we approve the ordinance, sir.
Second.
Motion's been made in second. Any discussion? If not, the vote's open.
By a vote of nine to zero, with Mr. Moss abstaining, you have approved the resolution.
Mr. Vice Mayor, if I could, I'd like to state the reason for my abstention.
Yes, please.
This is the same abstention that I registered, maybe it was last summer, it seems like a long time ago now. As an employee of the Department of Defense, I have concluded upon advisement by council that my participation in the city council's discussion and vote on this resolution would result in the appearance of a conflict of interest under the appearance of a conflict of interest standard that applies to federal employees in that this resolution addresses and talks to and makes reference to military requirements. My bias is to vote, but my duty is to preserve the public trust that I uphold the highest ethical standards that takes precedent. It is the latter and higher duty that my vote of abstention is being placed. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Moss. We will now go to the, I think I'm going to go to the bid opening for the lease of city property for 15th Street pursuant to code, pursuant to Virginia Code, section 15.2-2102. The chair will now summarize the bids that have been received for a proposed lease of a portion of city-owned property located immediately north of the existing 15th Street Pier, extending from the boardwalk easterly to the eastern boundary of city-owned property in the Atlantic Ocean and being approximately 250 feet wide north-south. Two bids have been received as follows. First, the city of Virginia Beach Development Authority, a political subdivision of the Commonwealth of Virginia, has bid 40-year lease term, rent of $1 per year, lease the subject property from the city of Virginia Beach for the purpose of participating in the development of a new concrete pier. And two, Wool Service Supply and Logistics LLC, a Virginia limited liability company, has bid 40-year terms, rent $12,000 per year, total rent for 40 years, $480,000. Are there any other persons desiring to submit a bid at this time? There being no further bids, the bidding is closed. The staff will evaluate the bids that have been received and make its recommendations to the city council concerning the proposed lease at a future meeting. Yes, Mr. Moss?
Question, are the bids now public information, Mr. City Attorney? The bids that were placed and opened, are they now public information?
Yes, sir.
I only request that the bids be placed on the website so that all the public can view the bids that were received.
And, Your Honor, sorry, we had two people, two individuals that signed up wanting to speak on the bid. They didn't want to submit a bid, my understanding.
We don't have speakers on the bid.
That was my understanding as well. Thank you.
Next item is public comment on the SportsCenter PPEA proposals. Do you have any speakers?
Yes, Your Honor. Trish O'Reilly is the first speaker. Trish O'Reilly. And after Mrs. Riley will be Winston Bursh.
Welcome.
Thank you. Thank you all for having me. The reason that I'm here today is to speak on behalf and in support of the sports venue. I just wanted to say that our CVB, the Virginia Beach Convention Center and the Visitor Center do such a great job, and we appreciate all the support that y'all have given them in the past. Nancy Homan especially, our sports director of marketing for them, does a terrific job. But she's actually turning away people that are interested in coming to Virginia Beach because of the lack of facilities that we have to accommodate the growth that's happened in the sports industry and in sports tourism specifically. One of the reports was nationally, or globally, 45% growth over the next five years. I mean, there's not many areas that show that kind of increase. So in order for Virginia Beach to accommodate those, we need to have more facilities. In order for us to be able to continue to support the tourism industry in the direction that it's going, we need to be able to provide more venues for them to do. I know that there's speak of, you know, that, oh, well, we need more money for roads and we need more money for schools and we need more of that. Virginia Beach is one of the few places that earns itself independent revenue. We, not only do we contribute to the general fund, but we support most of what we do through the tip fund. So it's not like we're asking for additional money or anything like that. We have it to generate. We just need public opinion to sway a little bit in our favor, because, I mean, we all benefit. Every person that's a resident of Virginia Beach benefits from the tourists that come here. And they're coming here more and more because of the sports industry. So I believe that that's what we need to show that we're in favor of. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Winston Bursh, and then John Zirkle.
Good evening to you.
Welcome.
I would like to speak in support of the SportsCenter from a human nature's perspective, from a human experience perspective, starting with my bride's sister, who has three children playing sports volleyball. It's not unusual at all that on any given weekend, these three kids are in three different cities in the eastern half of the United States, all of which are benefit and gaining, obviously economically, from this. The sports travel industry, as you know, is just simply huge, and there is no reason why we can't participate in that, and it's also no reason why they can't stay at home and support their efforts here in Virginia Beach and in coastal Virginia with everything that we have to offer. Secondly, by bringing all of this to Virginia Beach with the SportsCenter, we have what I'm going to call positive collateral impact. In the off times of the year, when our hotels and our restaurants are not as busy as in the summertime, we're now bringing in more people to have this positive effect and employ people longer, support workforce development, bring about the opportunities to educate these people and support these industries even further than we do today. Obviously, if we have a small number of people, we can't put the money and the resources into things like workforce development as we can if we have more people to participate. Thirdly, is the people who don't get a chance, who are less likely to be in families that would be able to participate in the sports travel industry, in the sports travel that their family spends so much money on. And there are a lot of people locally that this would apply to. If we can put this facility here, then we can also, in off times, if we're willing, right? In off times, we can put people from all over the coastal Virginia area in there who cannot travel all over the eastern half of the United States and let them know that they have opportunities that they didn't have before. With that, Robert Kennedy quoting George Bernard Shaw, "Some men see things as they are and ask why. I dream of things that never were and ask why not, and we have an amazing opportunity and we have the money to pay for it." I'll leave you with this. The human experience is creative. Thank you.
Thank you.
John Zirkle, and then Kate Pittman.
My name is John Zirkle. I'm the general manager of the DoubleTree by Hilton in Virginia Beach. I'm also a board member of the Virginia Beach Hotel Association. I'm here representing the tourism industry in regards to the SportsCenter. The sports tourism market's a $10 billion plus a year market. It's got 10% growth a year. So that's a billion dollars a year. The CVB sports marketing team's done a great job, but they need more facilities. They need this SportsCenter. We want to get a larger piece of that $10 billion. The sports tourism industry is very competitive. We compete with many cities, Berle Beach, Round Rock, Texas, Greenville, South Carolina, Hoover, Alabama, Gatlinburg, Tennessee. They all already have these new Sports Centers. For us to compete, we need the multi-sports, state-of-the-art SportsCenter. This will take our city to the next level, allow us to capture more events with greater attendance. The sports tourism guests tend to be families. They stay multiple nights. They're staying in a hotel typically, so they eat in our restaurants, two, three meals a day at least, and they spend money, a lot of money, not just on hotels and restaurants, shopping, attractions as well. With just the prospect of the SportsCenter, the CVB is already receiving interest from new groups that haven't stayed in our city before. USA Wheelchair Basketball, USA Volleyball, USA Footsaw, and many others. We hope that a site will be selected that's near the convention center to optimize the opportunities for the non-summer business. Hopefully, a site that would enable addition of an indoor track in addition to the hard courts, an indoor track, the indoor track seasons in the winter when we have our greatest need for visitors. These track teams are large and bring families. The nearest municipal are publicly owned indoor track, by the way, Birmingham, Alabama, Staten Island, New York. There's a lot of people between those that would love to come to our city. We could be hosting multiple track meets, bringing thousands more visitors to our city. A hydraulically banked track would allow even more use of the facility, because then we can have track meets. we can have track meets, we can lower the track, and we can have more volleyball courts, basketball courts, wrestling mats, and so on. Some of our current sports events are outgrowing our current space, and we're going to lose them if we're not careful. This center will allow us to keep those sports, allow them to grow, and continue to bring more people to our city. To get to the TIF fund, this was created and supported by the hotel community to tax our visitors to support the development of projects like this, to bring new business, added economic impact, and quite frankly, to enhance the quality of life for our residents. The Sports Center is a perfect example of investment by the city that will increase revenues and taxes. Through the increased visitation of our city, nearly 60 million a year from tourism taxes goes to the general fund, of which nearly 5 million goes to our schools. The Sports Center will only add to those tax revenues to support our citizens even further. The tourism industry strongly supports this initiative, and we've got a lot of people here that are supporting this initiative, and we want to look forward to your positive vote on this. Thank you very much.
Kate Pittman. And then Cheryl Smith.
Good evening. I'm Kate Pittman, the Executive Director of the Vibe Creative District, and I'm here tonight to thank you all for your support of the Arts District. We are the city's first Arts District, and we're very proud of that. And since Council designated the boundaries of that Arts District in 2015, we've seen some really significant growth. Approximately 20 new brick-and-mortar businesses, a brand-new community of small businesses that are working out of collaborative spaces like 1701 or incubator spaces like the old Beach Farmers Market. And we have this dynamic, creative community, and we're very excited about the opportunity that is presented within the Nineteenth Street Entertainment Corridor. The Vibe District nonprofit works with a supportive group of about 80 different businesses, most of which are located in the district and some of which do their business in the district. So, but perhaps our most prideful success is that the businesses and artists that are located in the Vibe are almost exclusively small business that are locally owned and operated. So, we really feel like we are the true authentic Virginia Beach community, and we look very much forward to a whole series of arts projects and events in 2018 and 2019. But I mention all of this because we are here, of course, tonight to help support our friends at the Convention Center and the Vibe Creative District Board and our friends of the Creative District Business Executive Committee, which is about a group of 20 successful local leaders, all collaboratively share our support with the Convention and Visitor Bureau on a Sports Center. We look forward to the conventions that are growing and being an active part of that Nineteenth Street Corridor. So, thank you for all that you do to help support Virginia Beach and for making the city a truly wonderful place to live.
Thank you.
Cheryl Smith. And then Lauren Bland.
Good evening. I'm Cheryl Smith, and I am one of the Directors and founders of Virginia Beach Volleyball Academy and Beach Elite. We are a travel volleyball club. We practice out of the fieldhouse, but with eight courts, we just don't have the facilities to hold really big tournaments. I've been with travel volleyball for 20 years. My children have played, and I've coached, and I, I've just been involved in every part of it. Just kind of giving you an idea of what the volleyball community could bring and how we could use a Sports Center. We've got 135 players, 135 young ladies just in our club. There are six clubs locally that are USAV AAU. Our season is from January through May, and in that time, we travel at least twice a month, and we're always headed out of town. We will go everywhere from Richmond, DC, Baltimore, Philadelphia, Chicago, Raleigh. We've been to Texas, Florida, Charlotte, Atlanta. We're all over the place, traveling. And when we do these travels, we have to bring our families with us, a lot of us. So, the brothers and sisters are brought along, and the whole family goes. It becomes a big, a big event, a big weekend. So, for a two-to-three-day tournament, if what they're saying is if they were able to have 24 courts, a regular tournament would have eight teams per court. With each team, that's at least, I mean, with 24 courts, you've got 192 teams for a weekend volleyball tournament. 10 players, two coaches, all of their families, plus referees. So, you're looking at at least over 4,000 people brought into one venue for a weekend tournament. At least 3,000 of them would be out-of-town guests. If you had parking, they would be paying for parking, restaurants, food, concessions. If this sports facility had a concessions thing, it would constantly be filled. At least 1,500 hotel rooms just for a weekend. And when the teams aren't playing, for example, there's a morning venue, a morning wave, and then an afternoon wave. So, once you're finished playing in the morning, they have all afternoon and evening to go do things, and they are constantly looking for things to do. The aquarium, escape room, iFly, Dolphin and Boat Tours, I mean, everything we offer. They'll be at the mall, they'll be at movies, team dinners. They're always looking for restaurants that will accommodate a big group of 10 to 12. So, there's a lot of things that we could do just with the volleyball community that we think would, would be helpful to the city, but it would also help us not have to travel all over the place every time, so.
Thank you.
Lauren Bland. And then Mark Waite.
Good evening. My name's Lauren Bland. I currently serve as the Executive Director of the Hampton Roads Soccer Council, but I'm here representing my regional perspective, as I've worked at many of the local sports organizations and recently served as an adjunct professor at Old Dominion University's Sports Management Department. As you've already heard, sports tourism is a $10 billion industry. You've heard all the great things that our Virginia Beach Sports Marketing Department has done. I have had the pleasure of attending conferences and conventions with the CBB team and have heard firsthand the accolades and the awards won by our local CBB Sports Marketing Department. Nancy Hellman and team are highly regarded and highly respected nationally. We truly have gems in our own city and our own backyard. So, in addition to the youth sports that you would expect to see in this facility, such as basketball and volleyball, I'm here to tell you that there are also emerging markets for different sports, such as footsaw, pickleball, racquetball, that would probably find this sports facility appealing to bring their events to. On a personal level, I've led the Hampton Roads Sports Commission. I've worked in hotels, and most recently, before I moved back to Virginia Beach, I worked in Charlotte, North Carolina, where I helped manage and open a brand-new basketball facility similar to the facility we're looking to build here. I've seen firsthand the impact that events, basketball events, volleyball events, can bring to the city. I've seen how directly the hotel room nights, restaurant sales receipts, I've watched small businesses flourish in shoulder seasons and winter months due to all of these tourists being in town. As you just heard, a typical event would bring between 2,500 and 4,000 visitors. Many of our hoteliers, when I was in Charlotte, shared with us that our sports facility gave their employees a boost in hours worked and helped them maintain higher-quality employees because they could offer a more consistent schedule. By building the sports facility, you are not only adding an attractive venue for visitors to play, you are taking care of your local hometown talent in the restaurant hotel industry who may be able to work more hours on a weekly basis during a typically slower months because of events at this facility. Thank you for thinking progressively about the impact that this facility could bring to our community.
Thank you.
Mark Waite. And then Diana Howard.
Good evening. My name is Mark Waite, and I'm the Director of Soccer and Footsaw for Beach FC, a youth soccer club here in Virginia Beach, which has 3,500 registered soccer participants from ages three to 18 years old. I also run a footsaw league through the winter months, which has grown from 19 teams in 2012 to 115 teams this winter. Not only is footsaw becoming very popular in the Hampton Roads area, but it's one of the fastest-growing sports globally. For those unfamiliar with the sport, footsaw is a fiver-side derivative of soccer played on a basketball-sized hard court with out-of-bounds lines rather than walls associated with American indoor soccer. The prospect of bringing a sports facility to the Virginia Beach area, which will be able to host large footsaw tournaments, is very exciting to all those involved in the sport. United States Youth Footsaw, one of two major footsaw sanctioning organizations and the smaller of the two, recently held their youth national championships in Kansas City, which attracted over 120 boys and girls teams from 15 different states. This is approximately 1,200 participants, not including parents, siblings, referees, and coaches. Many other similar-sized youth footsaw tournaments are being held throughout the country. As the sport continues to grow, though, the demand for larger facilities increases too. What is needed in a footsaw facility to host these large footsaw events? The most obvious is plenty of footsaw courts. A 12-court facility would enable the city to host a regular footsaw weekend tournament with approximately 180 teams, more if put on a holiday weekend. Having a single sports-specific facility to host this number of teams will set Virginia Beach apart from many other cities who still use multiple smaller locations. The floor is also very important. As there aren't footsaw-specific facilities that have enough courts to hold large events, all major tournaments are played on basketball hardwood floors. The current trend for large footsaw events is to use multipurpose, sports-specific facilities, which provide the required flooring amenities, experienced hosting large sports events, and allowable wear and tear on a facility associated with youth sports. Convention centers, which have been used in the past, are now being replaced by large multi-sport indoor facilities. At Beach FC, we host outdoor soccer tournaments and know firsthand the attraction Virginia Beach has as a sports destination. Our Columbus Day Tournament attracts over 3,000 soccer players, of which are around 70 percent from areas outside of Hampton Roads. In my opinion, we're at the beginning of the footsaw boom within the United States. I know the footsaw cannot answer all the needs of a large sports facility, but with increased demand for multi-court sports facilities for footsaw tournaments, particularly in off-peak winter months, a facility like the one proposed would make Virginia Beach a very attractive destination and frontrunner for major footsaw events in the future. Thank you.
Thank you.
Diana Howard. And then Jimmy Capps.
Hi. How you all doing today?
You're welcome.
I would like to have commented on the proposals, but I went online and I didn't see any of the proposals. All I seen was a group of, you know, marketers, construction people, and operators, you know, listed there. And then there was the suggestion by the city planners, who they suggest that we should use. And I can understand why they would use the Eastern Shore Management Company, because they're the ones that currently operate the fieldhouse that we have down in Princess Commons, in Commons. So, that's good and everything. I just would like to agree with Ms. Henley, who said that we should have more engagement with the public on what actually these proposals are. They had one with the dome site over at the Convention Center. I was unable to get there because I had a board meeting that night. But it would be like when we had the arena. Remember, we all went there, we seen both sides of the proposals, and then we could say which one we liked and which one we don't like. But having not seen them, we can't say that. So, I just wanted to know if we were going to be having something like that and support that suggestion. Thank you.
Jimmy Capps. And then BJ Bowman.
Mr. Vice Mayor Jones, Members of City Council, City Manager Hanson, City Clerk Ms. Barnes. My name is Jimmy Capps. I own and operate the Breakers Resort Inn with my family. The Breakers Resort Inn is located at 1503 Atlantic Avenue. We've been there for 30 years. I want to divide my remarks into two, two parts. The value of tourism and the economic vitality of Virginia Beach's economy and the resort projects. 2016 data collected by the U.S. Travel Association, Virginia Beach visitors spent $1.49 billion, an increase of 6.2 percent over 2015. Local tax receipts grew 8.3 percent, reaching almost $59.5 million. State sales receipts are reported to be $72.5 million, representing an 8.2 percent increase. Employment and travel and tourism-related payroll in Virginia Beach grew by a substantial 8.5 percent to more than $277 million. Longwood Institute reported 2016 visitation numbers, 15.2 million visitors in 2016, an increase of 9.4 percent. 7.1 million were overnight visitors, 8.1 were day visitors. To quote Mayor Sessom's, "Tourism is our second-largest revenue generating, supporting close to 13,000 jobs and producing local tourism-related taxes of nearly $55 million, the equivalent of 10 cents on the real estate property sales tax." These numbers were possible because you, as City Council members, voted to support resort projects and programs. Part two is the Athletic Fieldhouse. 73 percent of the Convention Bureau's room nights are sports visitors. That equates to heads and beds. Families follow the athletes. A participatory sporting market has prospered in Virginia Beach. We have an excellent team that goes out and recruits, and we do an excellent job of that. We need more and better facilities. New Fieldhouse needs to include the indoor track. Virginia Beach would be the first municipality on the East Coast to have an indoor track. Operation of a new Fieldhouse, the city should, will control it for Friday, Saturday, and Sunday. But the local participation needs to be available to backfill on Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday. Just like in hotels, we're, we're more successful when we fill up during the week. We count on the weekends coming along. We have opportunities to develop three projects in the resort within the next three years. Athletic Fieldhouse, the Pier Place, and the Dome Site. You have been supportive of programs and projects that enhance tourism. We have an opportunity to develop three projects that will help make our resort a year-round destination. Let's all join together and get these projects underway. And I'll quote Assistant City Manager Ron Williams, "Everything is in the works. Let's work the plant." City Council developed the TIF program to fund these projects and facilities. I ask for your support to get this project underway. Thank you.
BJ Bowman. And then Kevin Martengale.
Well, this is exciting tonight. Good evening, Vice Mayor Jones and Council members. I'm BJ Bowman, owner and operator of Rockefeller's Restaurant at Rudy Inlet in Virginia Beach. I'm here this evening in the capacity of Vice Chair for the Resort Advisory Commission and for the Virginia Beach Restaurant Association as Vice President. I've had the pleasure, over the years, of coming before City Council on various issues regarding the resort community, and never before have I felt the excitement and the optimism of this project. As indicated in information provided by the CBB and outside consultants, we find ourselves at capacity and facing more competition with bigger, newer facilities for a market segment that's been one of the major factors of our resort's continued growth. This initiative knows no boundaries. Restaurants, hotels, retailers, attractions, the list is endless, in its support of building a world-class sports venue. Both RAC and VBRA enthusiastically support the multipurpose sports venue concept as presented and hope that you find your way to build a state-of-the-art, first-class facility. On a personal note, I have three children that have played travel soccer, basketball, baseball, and field hockey. I can tell you firsthand, personally, sports families spend a lot of money. We represent a guest that's a perfect fit for our city, and we appreciate everything that you've done to support us on this issue and all that you do for the city. Thanks.
Thank you.
Kevin Martengale. And then Jackson Martengale.
Good evening. My name's Kevin Martengale. I'm familiar to most of you as an attorney here in Virginia Beach, but it is my distinct pleasure to be here as a father tonight instead. I'm the father of Harrison Martengale, who's a second-year student athlete running for LSU. Doria Martengale is a first-year student athlete who runs at UVA. And Jackson Martengale is going to address you himself as a junior at Princess Anne. I want to tell you what they all have in common. They all have in common that they have competed for Princess Anne High School and have had great coaching and teaching there. And they all have in common that they've never run an indoor track meet or even had a practice on this side of the Hampton Roads Bridge Tunnel. And that's pretty amazing when you think about it. Norfolk, Portsmouth, Virginia Beach, Suffolk. Norfolk, Portsmouth, Virginia Beach, Suffolk, Chesapeake, no facility. We probably don't have enough facilities right now in Virginia Beach to accommodate a lot of other sports. We can use more basketball courts and places to play soccer, volleyball, wrestling. There are a lot of sports, and there are a lot of athletes who would benefit from these opportunities, and there will be major, major tourism improvements if you do this. But we really need this badly for indoor track. The closest facility is in Hampton, and frankly, at this point, it's too small. The surface is hard. It's hard on the athletes. It's just not great. Then you have to go to Richmond to find a fairly decent facility. It's owned by a private school. The only true top-level facility located in the entire state of Virginia was built a year ago at Liberty University, and it is busy. I will correct one thing I've heard some other speakers say. There is a publicly-owned facility in Maryland. It's the Prince George's County Sports and Learning Complex, run by the Department of Parks and Recreation. And let me tell you what I just did. I looked at their schedule while sitting here waiting. They had 24 track meets in December, 24 track meets in January, and 20 in February. These are the ones that are scheduled. That's a lot of busy action on a track. Everything from elementary school track meets all the way to wide-open invitationals, colleges, they have a championship season coming up, they have league meets. It is incredible seeing how busy they are. So this is my pitch. Over 20 years ago, I stood in front of you and urged you to go forward with your plans and your ideas for the Virginia Beach Amphitheater. And I think everybody will agree, that was a success and a good idea. And you did it right. You went all in. This is an easier call. You don't have any competition anywhere in this region. And this, I would just urge you, if you're going to build the fieldhouse, do it right. Go all in, and let's really take ourselves up to the next level. And if you want to know how Prince George's County did it, by all means, contact them. I'm sure they'd be happy to brag about how successful it is and how busy it is. Thank you for your time, and please do it.
Jackson Martengale.
I'm Jackson Martengale, and I am a junior at Princess Anne High School, where I run indoor track. And though this would not personally benefit me in the immediate short term, because due to construction, it would be finished, finalized, after I am out of high school, I recognize that this is a need in our city and in this area. Boo Williams Sportsplex, the indoor track in Hampton where my state meet will be run, has holes in the track, and every renovation to this track gets pushed back every year. And it is also a flat track, significant because if we built a hydraulic track, athletes would have a greater desire to run there, because the physics of the flat track mean that as you're running around the corners, more energy is spent to be running around the corners, whereas on a hydraulically-banked track, the slope of the bank can be changed for each of the events that are run there. And an indoor track, a hydraulic indoor track, if built in Virginia Beach at this sports center, would also help to fill the hotel rooms during a time of year when our hotels have low occupancy rates. This would be another step in becoming a year-round tourist and athletic destination. This area, specifically South Side Hampton Roads, is known nationally as a hotspot for track and field talent. That begs the question, why are there no indoor tracks in South Side Hampton Roads? This is an area devoid of competition, and managed correctly, as in some other areas in the nation, an indoor track has the potential to contribute millions of dollars to local economies every year. Something that would be an extremely valuable amount of money to our whole city in the winter months. I read about Lynchburg, who is expecting massive economic benefits from the Liberty Indoor Track, because there are enormous meets, where people travel from across the country to go to this one indoor track. And if we had that in our city, there could be massive tourism benefits. Thank you. Have a great evening.
That's all the speakers.
All right. I'll now move to back to some ordinances, and I'm going to go to ordinance number nine, members of council, so we can hear the other two together.
You didn't give me... I don't have a card.
It's very confusing, the agenda. And on the pier, I wanted to speak on the pier, because there wasn't enough information. But on the... I mean, I have never seen anything so rigged in my life. I mean, Hotel Motel funds most of y'all. Everyone has a conflict. All these people here begging and pleading for something at the oceanfront, it's to fill hotel rooms. There's plenty of schools and colleges, even your high schools could have tracks, indoor tracks, all these enormous schools that you build. I attended the event at the convention center. I've never seen so many city employees. All these people here, how many people here have a financial interest that would make money or have a job from the dome? Mr. Davenport. You have conflicts. Aren't you involved with Monarch Bank, Town Bank? Rosemary Capps Wilson, I've already mentioned this. Jimmy Capps may not be immediately related, but he is one of your relatives.
He is not one of my relatives. I told you last time. Not related in any way.
Okay, well, let me finish, and then you can correct anything. Okay. You still have Town Bank conflicts. Work Jar Hathaway. When I'm finished. Thank you. Thank you. It's a supermajority 9-2 vote. Everything is for Hotel Motel. I mean, I petition for skate parks, for roller skating, everything sports for our kids. It doesn't have to be at the oceanfront to fill hotel rooms. We have needs. We have flooding. There's potholes all over the city, huge ones. Okay, as far as Economic Development Authority, Michael Levinson, you know, he has conflicts with Town Bank. I think it was Molly Sessom's that was at the event, at the convention center. You have half the surfing community there. This is a want, not a need. We need not to have almost $1.5 billion in debt for private projects. City is shameful, all of you.
That's all the speakers.
Is that all the speakers?
Yes, sir.
We will now go to ordinance number nine, which is an ordinance to accept and appropriate either A, option one, $5,292,784 to CIP 7041, Central Resort District Drainage, or B, option two, $5,292,784 to CIP Project 7028, Ray Windsor Woods Drainage. And I might note that all members of council have endorsed option B. Do we have any speakers?
Yes, sir. Ten cord.
So this past November, we had the whole issue with the FEMA money, the $5.2 million that was going to be redistributed or transferred over to the resort, as the SGA's call it, or the oceanfront. But yet now, we defer it to now. And I thought it was rather interesting that... And I wasn't the only one. It was kind of brought to my attention, and I kind of sat on it. I was like, the more I chewed on it, it was how they said, which was, when I read that code, that it's obtaining money is under false pretenses. I know that, from what I'm being told, that it was retaining the money that we had spent out of pocket and basically reimbursed, but yet nowhere was it ever said that that's what it was in that original docket. But Shannon, you had turned to Stiles and said, "Well, can we get an opinion from Stiles, the city attorney?" Yet he said, "Oh, well, you know, we didn't do anything wrong. We're going to go ahead and..." You know, basically the attitude was, we're just going to go ahead and do what we're going to plan on doing. But yet, you guys defer it to now. And now, all of a sudden, there's an option B, which is to put it into Windsor Woods. That could have been your first deal, and there wouldn't be any more discussion, because now, not only did the city spend the money there, but now you could double the efforts and spend the money again to help the process along. But yet, now we're here again. It's ridiculous that we have to go this many meetings or this many agendas just to get what the people want, not spending it out where you guys want to build your pet projects, which is to bring in more so-called tourists. Our taxes keep going up. This is ridiculous. When can we, like, not have a year or even five-year period where our taxes don't go up, or say, "You know what? We taxed too much. We're not going to touch anything, or we're going to knock a little bit off your bill"? You guys just keep taking, taking, and taking. And this is why the people are now fed up and coming knocking on your door, saying, "No, we don't want light rail. We defeated that. No, we don't want the arena. We defeated that." The people are telling you what you want, and you're saying, "Nope." You're thumbing your noses at us. So that's all I have to say. As far as 2.2-3704, as far as regarding the FOIA request, I would like a copy of the petition for that FEMA money.
Diana Howard?
Yes, sir.
I am so happy that you are all for option two. I just came here just to support that you're now putting the money towards the hardest-hit area during Hurricane Matthew, and I appreciate it that they are going to be getting done sooner rather than later. Thank you.
Barbara Messner.
I don't consider sooner, over a year, giving help to them. The city didn't even prepare before Hurricane Matthew. How you doing? We had to ask Mayor Sessom several times to open shelters. And you're given a token, $5 million. There are potholes all over the city, huge potholes. We have sewer pipes leaking. We have storm drainage that's falling apart all over the city. These potholes, you're well aware, because you sent me letters, that a lot of these potholes, including the huge crack in the middle of Laskin Road in front of Sonic, that's been patched, it doesn't hold. The one in front of, on Republic Road by Kroger, that one keeps falling apart, because the sewer pipes are leaking. You cannot repair something if there's nothing under it. And my car has driven into too many of these, including the one in front of Breeden's property over there at Great Neck, and in front of, it's not Atlantic Garden anymore, McDonald's Garden. They reported it two weeks ago. What is the timeframe for fixing it? Anyway, you're already using some of the money at 16th Street. Mr. Capps, who has been part of Hotel Motel forever, all these people coming here for their own district to be funded. Like I said, I'm disgusted with all of you, and I don't appreciate the interruptions. If you have something to say, kindly say it afterwards. Stop the pier. No dome deal. Dumb deal. Save Owls Creek. And I hope somebody starts the recall, petition recall, to have everyone else do. You're all horrible.
Virginia Wasserberg.
I don't think that any of you are horrible. And I'm actually here because my house flooded a year and about four months ago. I live in Windsor Woods, and I'm just here to speak on this and say thank you for redistributing these FEMA funds to our neighborhood. Thank you, Ms. Kane. She's my district rep. Thank you for standing up for us back in November to the rest of the council. Thank you, Councilmember Moss. Thank you, Ms. Abbott, Mr. Dyer, for sticking up for us, poor folks in Windsor Woods, and pressing on with that for us, and kind of championing this for us. And I appreciate the explanation, City Manager, in the informal and the workshop today, in letting us know the timeline for these projects, and that we can be expecting them in about 2019, and letting us know why, you know, that it takes a while to study these projects and to get it all laid out properly. I agree with you, Ms. Henley, in that it is really, really important for us as the public to understand the why behind these things, and to kind of put it on a level that more people that don't really know numbers and figures, as well as perhaps an engineer may know, to help us understand it. So I look forward to having more of that input from all of you and from the rest of the city staff as we progress in this. And thanks for shaving a couple of years off of the project. I hope I'm still around to see it, you know, in the neighborhood. Some days I hope it, some days I don't. But thank you so much for that. Just moving forward, Mr. City Manager, you did say that this would help shift funds around, and I would just, I'd like to ask that you guys kind of give us an idea of what that shift is, if it's a shift from Windsor Woods, money that was appropriated from Windsor Woods into Princess Anne Plaza, or if it's a shift into some other neighborhood. We really appreciate that information. So, thank you all.
That's all the speakers, Your Honor.
Thank you. I'll now entertain a motion on item nine.
So moved.
Second.
For option two.
Thank you.
Yeah, I was going to yield to the district person, but I just have one comment to make. If I could. If it hadn't been for the staff, doing all those applications, which I read, each one of those are about 38 pages each, those staff grant applications back last November/December timeframe, Mr. City Manager, I wouldn't have had the material and the knowledge to be an advocate. And I just want to acknowledge the hard work of the staff, because they're the ones that did all those long narrative justifications, all those numbers, how many houses, how many flooded. If you look at those things, and they are on the web, if one wants to look at all those three grant applications, I really do appreciate the work that went into those, because without that, I wouldn't have been able to communicate effectively with our peers. And I appreciate, City Manager, revisiting that. I think it's, let the data speak for itself, and I appreciate Shannon as well, and all your help, and the board. I do appreciate it very much.
And if I can say, I do apologize to the district person for being quick. Sorry about that.
That's okay, as long as we approve this.
That's okay, as long as we approve this, I don't care who recommends it, so let's go for it.
All right. Any further discussion, comments? If not, the vote is open.
By a vote of ten to zero, you have approved the resolution nine B for Windsor Woods Drainage.
All right. Now, we will now go to item four under ordinances, I'm sorry, item five under ordinances, which is an ordinance to approve the sale of school board property located at 273 North Witchduck Road, and allow the school board to retain the sale proceeds. Are there any speakers?
No, sir.
All right. May I have a motion?
Mr. Vice Mayor, I'd like to make a motion for a 60-day deferral. I have already stated in informal session that I have concerns of the overall use of the property, and Councilman Moss has also stated concerns of how a value was derived on the property. So I think, in the spirit of Councilman Moss's concerns, and although I don't think anything's gonna change my opinion on what the use of this property should be, I think 60-day deferral would be where I'd advocate for.
I would second that motion.
Vice Mayor Jones, I'd ask for a substitute motion to approve.
Second.
Second. And I'd like to make some comments.
So would I. But you go first.
We'll now discuss the substitute motion.
I'd like to make some comments. As a former school board member, and as a member of the School Modernization Committee, and as a person who started the Housing Advisory Board, how much we really need this project. Eighty percent of the units in these households are gonna be income of no more than 60% of the area, meaning income. We really need it. Mr. Moss talked about the homeless all across this country. We really need it. This is gonna be quality construction, with a clubhouse, swimming pool, and I really like it's gonna have a dog park. School and city employees are going to get notification about the housing, so that they will know that this housing's gonna be there, and they'll be able to apply for it. The school board unanimously voted for this project. They are duly elected. The citizens gave them the power to decide what they should do with their property. Sitting on the School Modernization Committee, and I sit there with Mr. Jones, every year when we look at property, and they say, we need to modernize our schools, we've asked them, you've got excess property, you should sell your excess property. Well, this is what they're doing. They're getting $450,000 approximately, an acre, which is quite a bit of money, and our own Economic Development Department, they sent this out for bids, and they marketed the property, and this is what they came back with. I know that there was another bid that came in, but it was only for the front part of the property, and it would have been really hard to have sold the back part of the property. And this is a very good deal. The school board thought it was, that's why they voted unanimously, and I really think that we need to support our school board. This money will go into schools' construction, which we really, really need, and I ask for the rest of the board to approve this.
Any further?
One more thing. Sorry, one other thing. As far as the traffic, it's been approved by the City of Virginia Beach, the Virginia Department of Transportation, and the Federal Highway Administration. There is construction going on, there's gonna be a six-lane road there. The transportation traffic should be okay.
Any further discussion?
Mr. Vice Mayor, I have a few remarks I'd like to make. I certainly acknowledge that the school board has the absolute authority to dispose of their property. They don't have the absolute authority to rezone their property. That's the responsibility of this body, and this body, in a later part, is tied to a rezoning. So I just want to make it clear what their authority is. But, the school board, like us, since we're having to give permission to retention, we all know who actually owns the property, is who? The public. We are just the guardians of the public interest. And my issue has been about how much we're selling the property for. Now, for a part of the acreage, 2.5 acres of the property, someone was willing to bid 1.6 million. So if you take 2.58, divide it into 10.6, multiply it by 1.6, just to get an idea, that comes to 6.57. Now, that may not be the real value, because you gotta look at all the parcels. So then I asked, well, can I get a copy of the appraisal? If they say, how do I know that we are getting the fair market value? We know the assessment's 1.2 million, so clearly, there's some problem between what the city assesses property at, which is supposed to be the market value, and what someone bids. That's a big difference, $2.9 million. But that's a question for a different day. So I went and asked for a copy of the appraisal, because I think part of our job as a fiduciary is to know that this number is a legitimate and best market value number. And how do we do that? You ask for an appraisal of property. So I asked for a copy, and this was the response. Quote, "The appraisal value is 4.5 million. Our office does not have a copy of the school board's appraisal for the property," meaning no one on the city staff, "since this is a real estate negotiation, and the parties have not yet consummated the transaction, the appraisal will not be released until after the closing." Now, that's, so now we're sitting here, we're being asked to, in the blind, say, well, I don't know what's behind that number, so I don't know if we're getting the fair market value to sell it. I'd like to have a copy of that appraisal. I think we would, I think all of us, to vote on this without having that, can ascribe to the public that we're doing our fiduciary responsibility to know that that number's right, and what was it based on? So, independent of other considerations, which are on the planning side, that's later, the application for land use about traffic, we'll talk about that later, but to sell the property and keep the proceeds, this body ought to really know what that property's worth, and is in fact the representation that we've been told, right? It's like a number without evidence. So it's not that I'm prejudicial to the thing, I just think this body deserves to know the underlying empirical analysis that supports the sale, so when I'm acting for the public, that I know I've met my fiduciary responsibility, and I cannot.
Yes, sir.
I'd just like to say, Councilman Moss, I understand your rationale there, but what I would tell you is that the front piece of property that was bid on had the road frontage, which would add a premium to it, and would leave the back half at a disadvantage, and so there's the price difference. And I guess one of the things that you and I talk about a lot is the free market. This was put out for request for proposal. Anybody could have bid on it. This was the highest bid, and I think that this is, just like Rosemary so eloquently said, this is the desire of the school board. It was heavily vetted by the board, and as a result of that, it ended up in a unanimous vote, which for that school board is, I think you would agree, a pretty big deal. And so, that being said, I hope that everybody will support the substitute motion to approve this.
That being said, and I acknowledge the analysis about the value.
Sure.
But doesn't answer the question what the real value is? And all I know is-
Wouldn't the free market answer that, though?
How do I know?
Because it was put out for request for-
How do I know if you aren't willing to hold it longer and look at the value? What's the, and is it only because it's contingent upon apartments, which is a separate issue? This is a contingent sale, that's why that phrase was in there, consummate the transaction. So the value only exists if we rezone the property. We haven't made that decision, so it's really good to understand what is the underlying value of that property if we don't want to rezone it, and is the difference that you gain from the rezoning worth the differential? That's a public policy decision.
I agree.
And that's a policy of this body, not a policy of the school board, and without that underlying rationale and reasoning, you can't come to a deductive reasoning as to why we should vote yes or vote no.
And I respectfully disagree.
All right, we will.
Ms. Wilson, you have something to add?
Yeah, I did. Our own Economic Development marketed the property. They were asking four and a half million. The buyer paid that amount, and they paid all of the fees, all the closing costs. The school board is getting all the proceeds.
All right, anybody else? All right, we're voting on the substitute motion. Vote is open.
By a vote of eight to two, you have approved the substitute motion.
All right, we will now go to the planning items referenced in it, which is item four, which is the Franklin Johnson Group Management and Development LLC, and school board of the City of Virginia Beach for conditional change of zoning from B2 community business to conditional A24 apartment at 273 North Witchduck Road, Kempsville District.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor. I apologize.
Welcome. Didn't see you there.
It's all right, sir, I apologize. I snuck up on you, we read. Thank you for the record, my name's RJ Nutter, I represent the Franklin Johnson Group. I appreciate the conversation that occurred. I'm here to talk about the rezoning a little bit, but before I do, I would let you know that my client originally bid $4 million for the property. The school board rejected that, and said, unless you're at 4.5, we're not gonna talk any further. So, we increased our bid. I'll also tell you that we just purchased property right down the street from this site and developing that property, and we paid about 25% less for that property than we're paying for this, even though that was a larger parcel, had much better access, oops, much better access and closer visibility to the interstate. So I would tell you that, I can't tell you, Mr. Moss, I'm a real estate expert in value, but I can tell you, based upon what we're paying for other parcels on the free market and what we're paying for this one, this is a pretty high price, what we're used to paying. So, having said that, I won't get into debate on that issue anymore, I'm here to talk about the rezoning application. We submitted this application some months ago, and as Ms. Wilson said, one of the conditions, or one of the issues we told the school board, is that we have to comply with the Fair Housing Act. We cannot turn down anyone that wants to apply and live at this apartment complex. But what we can do is work with the school board and make sure the teachers understand that this property's coming on the market, they have the opportunity to lease space in here. And to give you some idea, the school board, that would allow, by the way, 80% of those units would be limited to people who make about $48,000 a year. And that may surprise you, but that's really some of the earlier teachers are in that range, about one through three or four, depending upon their position, their degrees, and so forth, how much. So this really was an opportunity for the school board to try to address the housing need of their young teachers, and that's what they were telling us, we're talking with them, is that they had too many young teachers who could not live in Virginia Beach, but wanted a nice place to live. Once we'd crossed that threshold, we moved on to the design of the site, we worked heavily with the school board and with your SGA office on that. We redesigned the exterior to try to mimic the design and materials of the Renaissance Center next door. And one other thing I'll tell you about this site, we had to reevaluate and redo the site plan, because it's heavily encumbered by easements. And we had to move buildings around, even differently than staff literally wanted them because of these easement locations. So, another factor on value, if you will, but nonetheless, the point of this is that we worked heavily with your staff, heavily with the school board on the design, site plan, every component of this, of this site. I'm happy to tell you, we went to a public hearing with the school board on January, excuse me, on December 19th. No one appeared at that. We went to two different school board meetings, one in January the 9th, and one on January 23rd, so they could make sure they vetted all possible uses of the property. And as Ms. Wilson said, they voted unanimously on January 23rd. We've had no opposition, your planning commission has recommended approval, your staff has recommended approval. I did hear about the issue on traffic that came up in the early session. I would tell you that unfortunately Rick Wohman is not here tonight, but Rick gave about a 15-minute presentation to the planning commission on the two major projects that are underway, currently funded, that will have a major benefit on this site. The first, of course, is the Witchduck Road improvement, the extension of that over to the Boulevard. He said that's gonna make a major improvement in that. And the second, he pointed out to them how the large project at the interchange from 264, I'm from, sorry, 64 onto 264, will help alleviate that with the new flyover that's coming across, as they hope that will direct traffic down Cleveland Street and help reduce the impact on people turning on Witchduck Road. They can go down Cleveland, all the way down, go across the intersection there. So he gave an excellent report on both those projects, I'm sorry he couldn't be here, but I do see he sent an email to the city manager, I believe, and he said, "Traffic engineer believes that the traffic generated by the redevelopment of the city, the school site, 240 units, will fall into the background traffic gauge, and will be more, and will be more than accommodated by the Witchduck Road lining project, which will be completed in 2020." So, he was very satisfied with the traffic situation there. We had to be traffic satisfied as well, so you know, you don't wanna buy a site that people can get in and out of. So, we feel comfortable with that evaluation, and would ask for your vote and approval of the application. Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Moss.
May I ask a question?
Oh, yes, ma'am.
Ms. Nutter, this group manages the property, right, as well as develops?
Yes, ma'am, that's a very good point. They do manage, they own and manage the properties. They own, they manage other properties in addition to this, but they manage this as well.
They do have a good track record, and this will be, in looking at the specifics of the manner in which it's developed, it appears that it's, even though it's going to be targeted for lower to moderate income, it looks to me as if it's on a level fairly comparable to some of their higher leveled projects. Is that a right assessment?
Yes, ma'am, that's exactly right. And really what the benefits, the credits allow them to do is to still maintain high-quality levels, but offer them at lower prices. We've done projects around the region, and generally speaking, a unit here might cost, in a normal project, like without credits, would cost anywhere between $1,200 to $1,600 a month. These units would be available for the $700 range, for some of those comparable $700, $900 range, to give you some idea of the difference. Another point I'll make to you, that this was not a result of this application, but the Franklin Johnson Group provides, and this is a little-known fact, but every student who lives in any of their apartments that they own or manage gets free book bags and free school materials beginning of each year. So, that also, I think, had an impact on the school board. They've done that for years. It had nothing to do with this transaction, or with any other transaction they do in the future, it's just part of their policy.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Nutter.
My pleasure, sir.
Any other speakers?
No, sir.
No other speakers?
No, sir.
All right. May I have a motion, please?
I'd like to move for approval.
Second.
Motion's been made and settled. Any further discussion?
I have a question.
Yes, Mr. Moss.
I know we've talked about the flyover project over the Boulevard, and how, I mean, over the toll road, that's how I used to think. I still think it's a toll road, so bear with my age. I still remember going to Newtown Road to avoid that dime. But anyway, but the, but getting back, I've often talked about Clearfield Avenue, the run that runs by the Toyota dealership there, which is not being expanded when we do the Cleveland Street. If you look at this property, because it's only right turn in and right turn out, because that's a solid median strip, I do believe, because all those teachers aren't gonna work at the Renaissance Center, I'm pretty certain, assuming that they'd live there, that somehow people coming off that ramp are going to not come up Cleveland Street, because they still can't turn, and up on Witchduck going north, because they still can't get into their property. So I think that'll just be one more demand on people wanting to come up that Clearfield Road, to come up to the Boulevard where Haynes is, make the right, because that is a right-in-and-right-out-only at that apartment, and people will either be making U-turns, which obviously we don't encourage, because that has its own disruption, or they'll be looking for other avenues, like water, the path of least resistance. So I think you really need to look, again, I keep mentioning it, that Claire U Avenue, when you're looking at that roadway, what we're gonna do with that, because there is going to be increased traffic on that road to the Boulevard versus Cleveland Street. Because going north, that doesn't make sense. You're gonna go out on the Boulevard to get there as quick as you can, to get in that left turn lane, to then get on to Witchduck Road on the other side. I think that, I think that's a pretty good observation.
Yes.
Mr. Moss, the transportation team has looked at it, they've actually proposed a CIP project for it. I will just tell you, it won't meet, at this point, it won't rise to the occasion of just the level of priority road projects, but, like the Palm.
Yep.
It is in the Palm.
All I can ask is-
Yes, sir.
Get the requirement recognized, we'll figure out the priority later. Thank you very much.
All right, the vote is open. All right. The vote is open.
By a vote of eight to two, you have approved the change of zoning.
All right. We have one nomination that Ms. Wilson would like to make for the-
Committee. For the community organization grant, I'd like to nominate Virginia Roundtree.
Are there any further nominations? If not, the vote's open.
By a vote of ten to zero, you have appointed Ms. Roundtree to the community organization grant.
Is there any further business to come before the formal session of the meeting? If not, formal session is closed, and we will now go to-